I mean Alex? Just a minute, I'll call you a second. Are we ready? Okay, we're gonna call our meeting to take order. And we'll do a roll call by the city clerk.
The record shall reflect that all members are present.
The next thing on our agenda, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation by Pastor Alex. Is it Agua's? Oko's Church? Oko Hills Church? Got the two mixed up there, sorry. Welcome to our council meeting and thank you. If you'll all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing, please.
God of wonders, we enter into your presence today with humble hearts as we seek your will, your guidance, and your wisdom for our community. We thank you for entrusting us with this beautiful city. May it be a peaceful shelter for those who live and work within its limits. Thank you for those who have been privileged with leadership. May they serve the community faithfully with both love and wisdom. May those in the margins not be forgotten, and may both justice and grace be the hallmarks of our leaders. Inspire those who govern to ask good questions, that they may discern truth more clearly. May your spirit of peace and reconciliation permeate this room this evening and our community going forward. We thank you, God. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Agua. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. And the next thing on our agenda is our approval of our agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Mayor, there are no changes or additions or relations to the agenda.
And our city attorney, Darryl Piper, will bring us out of our closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The council met in closed session today to discuss the item on CS1. No action was taken. There is nothing to be reported.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is our consent calendar. And those are items, let's see, C1 through C7. And we'll take them all at once unless something is pulled off from our consent calendar. Nothing's pulled off here?
I make a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
Okay, a motion and a second. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Actually ballots, I think I'm thinking election. It must be. Cast your votes. Okay. The next thing on our agenda is our discussion items. And our first discussion item is D1. It's our cabaret license application with six breweries. And is Ally gonna do that, or is Cheryl?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Ally Zimmerman, Assistant City Manager. Cheryl Master, management analyst, will be giving the presentation tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The item before you considers cabaret license applications for six of Vista's seven microbreweries. Any business that wants to hold live entertainment and already has a valid California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, or ABC, license must apply for a cabaret license. Staff was aware that a number of the breweries intended to apply for live entertainment. To allow council comprehensive consideration, staff worked to bring the cabaret applications at one time rather than on a case-by-case basis. The Vista Business Park specific plan was recently amended to allow live entertainment for breweries in that area of the city. Four of the applications are from breweries located in the business park. Those are Aztec Brewing, Belching Beaver, Iron Fist, and Latitude 33. Two applications, Mother Earth and Prohibition, are from other areas of the city already zoned to allow live entertainment. In summary, staff is recommending the city council approve Class B cabaret licenses for each of the applicants, which allows non-amplified entertainment, groups up to three people, and no dancing. We recommend live entertainment be allowed during tasting room hours on weekends, which includes Friday from 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Saturday and Sunday from noon to 10:00 p.m. Those recommended hours exclude Prohibition Brewing Company, which is the only brew pub in this group. A brew pub serves food and operates with restaurant-style hours. Therefore, staff is recommending live entertainment be allowed at Prohibition more consistent with their operating hours, on Wednesday through Sunday, from 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Cabaret licenses renew annually with each fiscal year, ending June 30. Staff further recommends that prior to each annual renewal, staff will review ABC and Sheriff's Department violations and/or citations associated with the business. License renewal will be subject to discretionary approval by the city manager. The business owner will provide proof of licensee education on alcohol and drugs, also known as LEED, training, which is required by the city's responsible beverage sales and service ordinance, number 2009-21. Staff is also requesting the business owners provide at least one dedicated staff member during cabaret acts who will provide security to the area. The city will retain discretion to require a security guard if problems begin to occur. Each brewery has agreed to the city's recommended conditions. All applicants are reminded that they must comply with the conditions issued by the ABC and placed upon each applicant's Type 23 license. Both Mother Earth's ABC license for their Thibodeau Road location, as well as Prohibition's ABC license, currently prohibit live entertainment. These applicants will be required to apply to ABC for condition modifications. A cabaret license will only be effective in conjunction with ABC approval for condition modification. The six microbrewery applicants are Aztec Brewing Company, Belching Beaver Brewery, Iron Fist Brewing Company, Latitude 33 Brewing Company, Mother Earth Brew Company at their Thibodeau Road location, and Prohibition Brewing Company Incorporated. The first four applicants are located in the business park area of the city. This map shows the general location of the breweries. South Melrose Drive runs vertically along the upper-left corner in this map. Sycamore Avenue connects from South Melrose and runs essentially horizontally near Iron Fist and Aztec Brewing. Belching Beaver is located on Park Center Drive, near Business Park Drive, running vertically in the center of the map. And Latitude 33 is located on Vantage Court, near Point Setia Avenue, at the bottom of this map. Mother Earth's production facility is located on Thibodeau Road, running just south of and parallel to State Route 78. And Prohibition Brewing is located on East Vista Way, north of town, between Taylor Street and Warmlins Avenue. For some brief background information, the city council recently approved a cabaret license for Indian Joe Brewing Incorporated, also located in the business park area, with the same recommendations that staff is presenting here tonight. Historically, the city has required new businesses selling or serving alcohol to wait one year prior to applying for a cabaret license to allow review of operational performance. However, in an effort to support businesses that are not located in a census tract with an over-concentration of ABC licenses, nor located in a high-crime area, staff periodically supports cabaret licenses within that one-year time period. The city is optimistic that allowing non-amplified live entertainment will enhance the new craft beer manufacturers' chances of a successful venture. To further support this effort, the city specifically created a collaborative review program intended to collect information from partnering governmental agencies and to share that data in early communication with business owners. This provides an opportunity for the owners to receive immediate feedback and take corrective action if necessary. It is the city's intent to protect the use of Sheriff's Department resources in addition to the business park's current low average crime and arrest rate index of 45 percent. This rate index is calculated by the Sheriff's Department, and when it reaches 120 percent of the city-wide average, is considered a high crime rate. In addition to this early detection program, Sheriff's Captain retains authority to recommend suspension of a cabaret license at any time for any violations of law or any violation of cabaret license conditions. It is the city's belief that all of these efforts will work in conjunction with one another to afford a safe area for the community. This concludes staff's presentation. Mrs. Zimmerman and I are available to answer questions, and representatives from each of the breweries are here as well, with the exception, I believe, of Mother Earth.
I have one speaker, and then I have the breweries that will speak if there's any questions. So do you want to hear the one speaker first, and then if there's questions, then have breweries later? Do it that way? Okay, so I will have the one speaker, which is Chuck Rabel, first.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This is a no-brainer. You need to get out of the way, and when it comes to small business, let's first do no harm, okay? And keep in mind that there will be some infant mortality by some of these businesses. Witness your snack bar downtown, or downstairs, excuse me. But what little the city can do is to go ahead with this. And keep in mind that the city is gonna take credit for these breweries, but they had little, if anything, to do about them. If the city had something to do, what used to be Oji's, which is a brew pub on South Melrose, would be occupied by now, but it's been empty for years. Get out of the way and let business do what business does best. Thank you.
Okay, then we'll take your questions, and then if there's any other questions to have with the brew pubs, we'll have them. Does that sound okay? Okay, so first it'll be Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there an officer that could answer some questions for me?
I think we have Lieutenant Mark Ryan in the audience.
Could he come down, please?
Sure.
While you're coming down, I don't wanna shake you up, but simple questions I'm gonna ask you. Have you had any reports of, since they've been there, of accidents because of the breweries?
Car crashes?
Of any accidents there in that area because of the breweries?
I'm not aware of any accidents that were caused by the breweries down there.
Okay, so will you be, by any chance, taking, keeping track of if there is a problem with some of these breweries? You'll have some type of records that they could be problem ones? Do you do any of that?
If directed to do so, and also with the Main Street businesses, as directed by the council, we keep you apprised of any problems or issues in those areas.
Councilman, if I might add, that staff works very closely with the ABC and the Sheriff's Department, so if there are any problems within the vicinity, or there's any DUI-related incidences related to a specific brewery, we're notified of that.
Okay.
And so we track that, and we record that, and we'll review it as the annual licenses come due, if it is approved.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. This weekend, a lot of these brewing companies that were here locally met at the downtown. They had a Blues and...
Brews.
What's it called?
Blues and Brews.
Booze and Brews, whatever you wanna call it. And I was there the whole day, and they were very good about what they did out there, and they were very cautious about people not overdrinking. And it turned out to be a great event. I believe they had twice as many people as they anticipated having there, and I think it was a great thing for the community. They also had that art across the street at the, and there was no parking anywhere. I mean, it was a great event for our community this last week. Now, I'm not gonna have a problem with this. Like Mr. Rabel says, get out of the way. Thank you.
Councilmember Aguilara.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think this seems like a pretty harmless request, and I think I can support it. I think our job as council members, as a city council, is to support business, and I think we should treat this like any other business, as long as it's a responsible, or they are responsible businesses. I can support them, and I think we have a great opportunity that is in front of us. For some reason, we have attracted several of these types of establishments, and I think that the council in the city should be very supportive. Especially in these times, when so many businesses are struggling, and we have this opportunity in front of us, I think we should continue to support them, as long as, again, they're responsible businesses, so I will be supporting it.
Mayor Protem Granke.
I know in the past I've been a little bit aggressive in having a restricted approach to microbrews. Not in that I don't attend them, and I don't think they're a good idea. I just think that we need to, you know, make sure we're not oversaturated with them. But I think this is a good idea also. I also attended a Blues Festival this weekend, and I saw that the vendors did a really good job of controlling the consumption of alcohol. I didn't see anybody there that seemed openly drunk, and everybody seemed to be having a great time. In fact, I think if the weather was better, you might even have a better crowd going into next year. I think it's gonna be a really good thing for the city. I have a question about the exception for Prohibition. This is something we're allowing simply because of the nature of their business, and that's something that other ones might take advantage of?
That's correct. Their brewery, they also have a restaurant, so they call themselves a brew pub, and their hours of operation are different than the other breweries.
Okay, fantastic. And I might add that I was up in the Los Angeles area recently, and our reputation is out there. So you guys are doing a great job, and people are becoming quite aware of North County that it's kind of the brew center, so thank you for what you're doing.
Councilmember Coles.
I want to congratulate staff for looking into each of these applications individually, and looking at what their proposals are, and making accommodations for the differences in some of their operations. I think this is a niche that has been bestowed upon us, and while we need to monitor and be watchful of how all of this grows, I support it, and I would like to make a motion that we approve this item.
I'll second that.
I think I got three seconds. Okay, and I also support it, so we'll cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So, thank you to all the brewers here. You didn't need to even say anything, but we appreciate your coming down, just in case. So, thank you, and we hope to all see you soon. The next thing on our agenda is item D2. It's the fiscal year 2011/12 fourth quarter financial report. That'll be done by Dale Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Presented to you this evening is the fourth quarter financial report for the year ended June 30, 2012. My name is Dale Nielsen. I'm the finance manager and city treasurer for the city. For the 2011/12 fiscal year, general fund revenues from outside sources totaled $60.3 million. This is up from prior year amount of $56.7 million. When charges to other funds and transfers in are added, total general fund revenues were $66.7 million. The general fund's two largest revenue sources are property taxes and sales tax. Actual property taxes were up slightly over the prior year's actual. Still came in a little bit under budget, but I think we're turning the corner on that and starting to head in the right direction. Sales tax revenues, the non-propel sales tax revenues, came in at $13,667,000, which was an increase of 903,000, or 7.08 percent, when compared to the prior year. So we had a relatively good year for sales tax last year. Exhibit 2 on page 8 provides budgetary and actual revenue information for the general fund for the fiscal year. Revenue items also include some items that were received in July and August but were really earned, or the city was entitled to them as of June 30. Exhibit 4 on page 14 presents similar information for the general fund from the expenditure point of view. For the year, total operating expenditures, including transfers to other funds, were $63.6 million, or 87.4 percent of the authorized appropriations. Once again, I'm pleased to report that all general fund revenue budget units came in under their budgeted amounts for the year. After accounting for reserves and designations, there is $3.7 million of available year-end general fund fund balance. The city manager has outlined his recommendations for the use of the year-end fund balance, and will now discuss those recommendations with you.
Yes, Council, just wanted to point out that per your city council policy on year-end fund balance, I'm recommending that we allocate $2 million to the structural deficit reserve, and this is a deficit reserve that we've had for the last few years, and we're enhancing this to allow enough funds to be used for the next at least two years to get through until revenues match expenditures. I'm also recommending that we put $362,000 to increase the revenue shortfall reserve to 12 percent. For over the last 10 years at least, we've had a 10 percent, what I'd call the emergency reserve. And as expenditures and revenues have gone down, we've kept that emergency reserve at the same level, which has allowed it to be a little over 11 percent. So what I'm requesting is for you to allocate $362,000 to that, to bring it up to 12 percent, following your goal of trying to get the emergency reserve up to 20 percent. And then the last two items are allocating $1.2 million to the Paseo Santa Fe Fund, and this is for a portion of the detention base in approximately $500,000, and approximately $700,000 for the streetscape design. Originally, we were planning on using the 2011 bond money, redevelopment bond money, to pay for that. However, with redevelopment going away and the state's actions, we are no longer able to use that funding. And I should point out that the Paseo Santa Fe Fund is on, is your number-one priority on the five high-priority goals. And then the last item there is to put $143,000, or the remaining money, into the economic development strategies that were outlined at the last meeting we had, and are also on your high-priority goals as priority goal number three. And that'd be $143,000. That would help fund the facade improvement program that was discussed at the last council meeting, as well as some regional, North County regional efforts.
So are there any questions? Cosmo Lopez?
Don't we have a speaker?
Oh, I guess we do have a speaker. How did you know that?
I can see it. In your hand. I can see it in your hand.
You must be psychic. Okay, our first speaker, Chuck Rabel.
Hello again. Just a couple quick questions. On exhibit 7, which is a combined balance sheet for the enterprise funds and a combined income statement, two questions come to mind. One is, what is undesignated under fund equity? It's about $300 million. Page 17.
Page 19, yes. The undesignated retained earnings in an enterprise fund represents that portion of retained earnings, and I'm not being flippant here, but represents that portion of retained earnings that is not reserved or designated for another purpose. Now, being an enterprise fund such as the sewer fund or the Buenos Sanitation District, even though it's undesignated, it's still go towards running that particular operation. Now, I know those numbers look quite large.
They are quite large.
They are quite large, but you gotta remember that for the city sewer fund and the Buenos sewer fund, a big piece of that undesignated retained earnings is represented by those fixed asset numbers that you see up in the top section there. Represents our, part of our ownership in Encina, all of the sewer piping that's in the ground. So it's not available cash or anything like that. It's not something you could use to pay bills.
Sounds kinda strange, especially since we just had a sewer fee hike three, four years ago, whatever it was. On the following page then, one quick question, and I'm outta here. We do have depreciation in there, which doesn't seem like enough compared to what we say the assets are, but I'll let that go. It just, is there an outside auditor or consultant that takes a look at these numbers?
Annually.
Pardon?
Annually.
And what outfit is that?
LSA.
LSA.
LSL.
LSL again, okay. Just had to ask. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rabel. Okay, so is that all you needed, Mr. Lopez? Is that all you wanted, Mr. Speaker? Did you have a question?
I'll speak too.
You're the next in line. Do you have a question?
No, I didn't have a question. I just, you had a speaker slip in your hand.
Well, your neighbor's on here, is why I'm asking.
I pressed that to go, so that when the time comes, he's gonna ask me to speak, I will speak.
I'm asking if you'd like to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, I wanna get outta here too. Thank you, Mr. Nielsen, for the hard work that you do here and keep things on track for us. You're always there to answer those questions when we have difficult questions. A question on, to this council that we've, for years, we've been talking about increasing that reserve, you know, and I'm glad we're doing that, Patrick. But you say that we're putting 362. Are we finding that money? Are we just, the money that's there, we're planning on putting in there? How are we putting that in there? How are we getting that?
Well, it's year-end fund balance money. So it's available money that we're allocating, or that's being proposed to the council to be allocated to increase the reserve per year, year-end fund balance, council policy.
Okay. A couple months ago back, I asked if we could possibly support a skateboard park, and I get a no from whoever, you know? And there's no money. There's no money. But we are increasing this by 12 percent, which I like, but when you tell me there's no money for a skateboard park, there's something wrong here. And so, and so I would like that this next year, that we really work on the skateboard. If we can put money aside, then we can look at a method or a way to help the young kids of this community get the skateboard park that we promised them. Thank you.
Mayor, if I might add, just when we're making these recommendations to the city council, we're looking at your council policy. We're also looking at your high-priority goals, and the high-priority goals do not currently include a skate park.
Well, we promised it to them.
You know what? Frank, we'll work on that next year.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Coles.
Thank you. Mr. Nielsen, thank you so much for giving us such a good description of how our...
Mr. Nielsen, thank you so much for giving us such a good description of how our finances have been managed. I'm proud of you, of our leadership in the city and our council to help us rebuild from, you know, an economic meltdown from a few years ago. We were seeing a light at the end of the tunnel. It's so good to be able to start putting money back into building a reserve and to address the priorities that we as a council set several months ago. So, thank you so much, and Patrick, thank you too for keeping us on target with our goals. And I would move to approve this if that's appropriate.
I'll second.
And we have one more speaker. Mayor Protem Gronki.
You know what? I've been out listening to some of the forums and some of the forums and what the candidates are talking about when it comes to what the city needs. First of all, they're saying the city runs pretty well, and I have to agree with that. But there are some concerns and I just want to share those, and I think we're addressing them. One of the things that I heard was to pay down the deficit, and as I can see right here, there are a number one item on there, is to do exactly that. A big concern was trying to increase business opportunities, and I know we had a lot of discussion during our goal setting, and that was another thing that we have on our list here to try to do some economic development. A third thing was to improve Santa Fe, and with redevelopment gone, we're doing everything we possibly can. I believe there's a couple of affordable income housing projects coming up here in the near future.
I have a report on that in the meeting here that I'll tell you about.
Okay, fantastic. The last two that I'd wanted to speak to is, a lot of people are concerned about this triple flip, and you've got to quit messing around with that, okay, Dale? And also the elimination of field fees. And when we went sour a couple of years ago and we brought that on, I kind of made a promise that we would try to eliminate that as soon as the budget got in better shape. And so, I would ask the council that, we really strongly look at that. We implemented those field fees in an attempt to try to balance the budget. The budget appears to be getting in better shape. When you talk about helping the young people of Vista, I really think that's even, I hate to say this, but more important than a skateboard park, because there's a number of families out there that have a couple of kids in their family, and they're paying these dues triple fold in some cases, and it's really hurtful. So, whether we do it now, is there another opportunity? Is there a near-term opportunity that we can take a look at that?
Yeah, actually, the, overall, the fees are coming before the city, the recreation fees are coming before the City Council on November 13th, and the sports fee is included in that.
I would highly recommend that the council consider the elimination of that, and in so doing, if we were to go in that direction, maybe a letter to the school board, because doesn't the school system also have a like fee? Or no?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay, well, then a letter saying, please don't do it incorporated would be wonderful. Anyway.
But can we discuss fees at the next meeting? Because I doesn't like agendized here tonight.
Can we discuss these right now?
No, because it's not agendized. We need to discuss the fees next, at our next meeting on the 11th.
I'm fine with that. I just want to make, you know, just show the emphasis that I want to place on that.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Aguilera.
I just wanted to say that I support talking about it at the next meeting.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
You're here.
You're here, okay. Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you. You're absolutely right, Mr. Gronki.
Wait, wait, wait. Are you going to talk about fees again? We're not talking about fees. We're talking.
We're not talking. Well, in a way, in a way not.
On the 11th, we're talking about fees on the 11th.
Yes, yes, but it's not about that.
Oh, okay.
Okay? They did speak a lot about how good the city has been run here in the last couple of years. We, obviously, the city ran into little problems when the economy went down, but I want to ensure the people out there that when the sports park has an event on the weekend, a local organization, they charge him $500, correct?
Wait, 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 wait. Are you talking about the sports park again? That's, all those fees and the sports park stuff is on the meeting of the 13th, not the 11th.
I know, but I'm just giving him some advice.
Advice?
Yeah.
Who?
Whoever's listening on the TV.
Well, could you give him advice?
You know what? I'll wait until then, okay?
This is not on our agenda.
Oh, yeah, I know, but it has to do with the sports, like he said.
Right, well, we're talking about that on the 13th, remember?
Fine, I'll wait, just for you, Mrs. Ritter.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Lopez. Okay, so.
We have a motion in a second.
Now, we have a motion in a second. So, please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Yay, okay. And we will talk about the fees on the meeting of the 13th, not the 11th. I had the wrong date. Okay, the next thing is our oral communications, and we have one speaker under oral communications, Robert Cunin. You have three minutes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Mr. Cunin. I'm only here to.
Speak into the microphone, right there. Speak in the microphone, and you have three minutes.
I don't talk loud anyways, and I'm here in tonight. My daughter spoke for me here a couple of weeks ago, and I'm only here to tell you that you made a big difference in her. She's been very sick, and she has lost a daughter, a granddaughter, and so for about the year, she was really in bad shape, and that night that she got out of here, it made a world of difference. So, I just want to thank you for that, and I have been working, getting things done that the people had asked me to do. Is it okay if I pass you off just a little thing, what I've been doing?
You have to give to the city clerk there, and she'll pass it to all of us.
That's all I have to say.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Cunin. We appreciate it. Okay, the next thing on our agenda are reports from any of our council members. We'll start with Councilmember Lopez. Do you have some remarks?
Thank you.
Till the meeting of the 13th?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Coles.
Yes, it's been an active time as we come into the holiday season around the city. We had a great grand opening out at the Hyatt jointly with a high school art program last week. Beautiful new facility. If you have a chance to go by and look or have breakfast there, I would recommend doing it. We had a, we got to meet the new commanding general at Pendleton, several of us at the council at their, it was the Navy, some kind of a dinner honoring the Navy Sea Scouts, and we enjoyed that too. So, it's great to be a part of the city. It's great to be a part of our region. Thank you.
Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to update you on the San Diego volunteer drivers. We had a luncheon for them. These are all volunteers throughout the county, and these individuals go ahead and drive elderly, disabled throughout the county, take them to their doctor's appointments, anything, you know, it could be getting a haircut, you know, but some of these people don't have the opportunity to drive themselves or just aren't capable or have the resources, and they work through many different organizations, some which are here located in Vista. We've got About Vista and the senior, what's the?
The senior center, the Out and About program?
Yeah, Out and About. Out and About, and that's run through the senior center. And so, I had, Mr. Crane was there, serving with me, and we got a chance to give out some free meals, so it was very rewarding and good to see all those people. They're very excited to be there and helping others, so it's good to see. And I just wanted to remember or remind everybody that voting time is right around the corner. Do not forget to go out and vote.
Two weeks from today, and I also was there today. I got to do the welcome for that, and so, it was, and they actually saved about a million dollars worth of, they provided a million dollars worth of services to the, you know, for the drivers. They drive, I think they said 49, like 49,000 people, and, you know, they just, it's tremendous what they do, so we appreciate them, helping all the seniors and all the people who don't have a ride places, so. Mayor Protem Gronki.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. I sit on the North County Transit Board, and I have a couple of pieces of information from them, one for the general public and one for the council to consider. The first one deals with a promotion that they're going to have on Veterans Weekend. That would be November 9th through the 12th. All retired and active duty military people will ride for free on the bus, the Sprinter, the coaster, you just have to show your ID, and military dependents ride for 50 percent, so thank you to North County Transit for that. On the other end of that is coming also from North County Transit in an attempt to increase revenues, which every agency is attempting to do, they're being rather aggressive in identifying their properties and using advertisement on their properties. So, if I could, I'd have the, maybe the management share this with the council members in a different time, a different venue, because there's pictures involved. But just know, I'd like to have feedback if you think this is too aggressive. Some of the coastal cities thought some of the wrapping of the buildings and the columns and everything at the stations might be a little bit too much and might turn off the consumer, so I'll just maybe share this with you and then you can get back to me on it. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, and so, just a couple of things that I had, and one was, at a future council meeting, I've asked them to do a prosperity on purpose. I don't know if you've heard about that. That's a thing that Bill Horn is doing, and I've asked them to do a report and demonstration. They have a very cool program that they've come up with, and so, the North County EDC, I've asked to have that at one of our future council meetings, maybe not, maybe not the meeting of the 13th, but maybe the one after that, so that's that. And then the other thing I wanted to do today, I thought would be kind of interesting, I wanted to update everyone on just our housing projects that are in the works right now throughout the city. I thought I'd just give a brief update on four of them that are underway. All of them are located near our downtown core, and we're just very excited about the vitality that they'll inject into our community. So, for many years, the city and the redevelopment agency, we're working on the mixed-use project at the corner of Santa Fe and Vista Village, right there at the corner, and that concept is, we can say, is much closer to becoming a reality. The developer, which is G8, is poised to bring the project before the planning commission within the next few months, and it will combine street-level retail with three floors of residential units above that. And as is proposed, there's 81 market rate for sale units and almost 25,000 square foot or square feet of retail commercial space. So, and we also have three affordable housing projects that are in the conceptual design phase right now. With a downturn in the economy coupled with the recent elimination of redevelopment, Vista is unique in its ability to be able to support any housing development at all. So, because our affordable housing funds have been invested in land purchases, we find ourselves able to pursue development where other cities can't do that. So, this is because the state has determined that any affordable housing cash must be returned to the state, but the cities can keep the land for affordable housing. So, our agreements for these projects will be coming before our city council in the next two to four months. So, one of them, the Paseo Santa Fe, and the city's working with Affirmed Housing as a developer of 69 affordable housing units and 3,500 square feet of commercial space, and this is located on the 1.63 acre site on the west side of South Santa Fe along, between East Broadway and Ocean View along the rail line, and that proposes three floors of residential units over the first floor of commercial and retail uses, leasing spaces and common space. Affirmed Housing is also proposing to develop and maintain the adjacent half-acre property to the north, which is like across from the Sonic Drive-In and all the way down, as a linear park there, and they're going to maintain that and develop that park. The second project is on North Santa Fe, not too far down from that one. It's across from the transit center, where, kind of where the, was it the Red Barn? The old Red Barn thing, we used to be there? The city's working with Community Housing Works as a developer of a 67-unit affordable housing project there, with 10 to 20 percent of the units reserved for the transition of aged-out foster youth, your kids, or not kids, I guess they're teenagers, but they're aged out, who've been in foster home system, who are losing their homes because they've turned 18. The project is on a 1.35 acre site. It's on the east side of North Santa Fe, kind of across from the transit center between Washington and West Orange, and that project proposes three floors of residential with tuck-under parking. And the last third, fourth one, or third one, actually the fourth one, is the Vista Buena Creek, former Sycamore Creek Mobile Home Park, is what I'm trying to say. The city's working with Chelsea Investments as a developer of approximately 190 affordable housing units. This project will be in two phases, and the first phase will construct approximately 100 senior housing units, and phase two will be about 90 workforce housing units. And this project is located in the former Sycamore Creek Mobile Home Park site, which is about 13 acres, but there's only about 5.5 acres that are buildable. And so, the site has a number of constraints to be, to building related to flooding and drainage issues down there in that park. About four issues of the site will be used to construct a detention basin. The development will also include cleaning and habitat restoration with the Buena Vista Creek, as well as upgrading and ongoing maintenance of the public walking trail along the creek. So, I just kind of wanted to update everybody on what's kind of going on in those projects and update everybody out there. And so, that is the end of my report, and so now we'll move on to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items. All of you may have heard about the sheriff's detective, Ollie Perez, who was shot in the line of duty in Lakeside a few weeks back, and while he's recovering, the bills are adding up for the Perez family. So, Rubio's has decided to donate proceeds on October 26th, and specifically, the South Melrose Rubio's in Vista will donate 20 percent of all transactions to the Perez family. And so, a staff member after the meeting, if you're interested, we have flyers. You have to have a flyer to present to Rubio's to get the discount, so we have flyers for audience members that would like them tonight, and it's a very sad situation for the Perez family and the sheriff's organization as a whole. The other one is Leadership Academy. Pleased to say that tomorrow night is the graduating class for the seventh Leadership Academy, since we started this in 2007, and for the audience, if anybody's interested, we're going to start another Leadership Academy in the spring. It's seven weeks. You get to go through and see how your local government, your city organization is operated, meet with a variety of different departments, and get to know what we do. And so, it's a very interesting class, and a lot of the participants that have graduated from that class have had very good things to say, so thank you.
City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report this evening.
How about our city clerk, Kathy? No, nothing tonight? Okay, if there's nothing else, we're adjourned at 6:18.